Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those roads are directing in all different directions. I'm sorry.
Roll call please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Krop.
Here.
Mensah.
You're right. Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, reports, including the quarterly department head reports. Whoever would like to start.
We'll start with the quarterly department reports.
Are there any from the commission?
No, I guess I would say start the...
So we'll start with the clerk's office with Lisa Borges.
The August 7th primary election went smoothly in the city of Mount Clemens with 28 percent of registered voters casting a ballot. Our office is now preparing for the November 6th state general election. We experienced a very large number of new voters registered to vote by the deadline of October 9th. An initial batch of over 1,000 absentee ballots were processed and mailed earlier this month to voters who requested them. The city clerk's office will be open on Saturday, November 3rd, from 8:30 to 2 o'clock to accept absentee ballots and assist with requests. This is the last day that any absentee ballots can be mailed out. For voters who vote in precinct 5, which is usually at Karnes Community Center or Jermaine Jackson Center, they will be voting temporarily here at City Hall as they did in the last two elections. The clerk's office was pleased to assist the Macomb County Elections Department in the countywide recount of the public transportation millage in August. The clerk's department processed over 540 business registrations for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The city clerk's office and the city manager's office has been working together with the bicentennial committee on the final bicentennial celebration event of the year. Its tinsel tour will kick off on December 1st. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards and committees. Vacancies remain on the following boards: Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Construction Code Board of Appeals, Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, Local Officers Compensation Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee. That's all I have.
Excuse me? Are there any questions? Thank you. Okay, next.
Next if we can have Brian Tingley from Community Development.
Okay, in community development in the second quarter of this year, we issued 376 building and other trade permits. There were 608. Our code enforcement case is open. We conducted 255 rental inspections and issued 116 rental certificates of compliance. 10 new certificates of occupancy were issued, and our city's contractor performed 164 grass and weed cuttings. This quarter, we attended meetings of the DDA and Planning Commission as well as a CDBG implementation workshop for some of our upcoming projects. A planning commission approved a site plan for a two-building, 75-unit senior living development near 96 North upon Grashit. We were able to secure some additional funding to complete the fire department roof replacement, and that project should be taking place over the next couple of weeks, hopefully. We worked with the city engineer AEW on finalizing the Shadyside Park project and kayak launch installation at MacArthur Park. And on the new city website, we set up a new inspection page underneath community development that will be adding information to over time. That's it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Next if we can have Linda Kuneth from the Finance Department.
We had an extremely busy quarter in the finance, treasury, IT departments. I'll just highlight a few of them. The annual financial audit was completed for the 1718 year. It included a couple of actuarial studies. Typically, we only have one. We have two, one for pension as well as the healthcare obligation, so it takes up quite a bit of time. Those were completed, and we should present the annual financial statements to generally the first meeting of December to the commission. Summer tax, property taxes were mailed and processed through September 17th. The winter tax bills are going to go out on December 1st. Payment information is available on the city website on how to pay taxes and how to pay bills in general. The city underwent an upgrade of AT&amp;T phone system and data connection. The city is, we're still working with AT&amp;T on fixing, cleaning up some of the transition, but the majority of it has been done. And what's keeping us very busy, as well as many departments, is the financial software upgrade. All of our modules in the financial system have been upgraded to another software package. All employees have been offered training and are using almost all of the modules. We anticipate completion of the transition at the end of the month. The upgrade's going to streamline a lot of the processes, and we're very excited about getting it all on one program. I wanted to take the opportunity real quick to thank city staff for all of their efforts in getting these modules together. It was not an easy undertaking, and I appreciate the very hard work of our very knowledgeable staff.
Any questions? Thank you.
Next if we can have Captain DeCossen for the Fire Department.
Good evening. In this quarter, the Fire Department responded to 963 runs, which is an average of just over 10 runs per day. We performed fire inspections, re-inspections, and about 12 planned reviews. We attended multiple community events, including a bike parade, Family Day at the farmer's market. We led the Daughters of Macomb Parade. We attended the Fallen Heroes Ceremony on September 11th, and we did fire safety talks in all the elementary schools. We completed many in-house trainings and attended some outside trainings. Outside trainings included confined space training with Exalta, thermal imaging camera training with Clinton Township, and we also sent members out to classes like nozzle forward, Fire Instructor 1, some EMS training, and some leadership classes. Members of the department were vaccinated for the hepatitis A virus. You guys might have heard about that in the news. It's been on the rise, so we got, by the county health department. We did our annual pump testing on Engine 1, Engine 2, and Truck 1. We did our annual ladder testing, which includes all our ground ladders and the aerial. We held our annual pancake breakfast on September 8th. All proceeds were donated. On September 26th, the ladder truck was sent to the Fire Academy on Dunham Road for a drill day where the students were taught aerial operations, and the students were allowed to climb the ladder and operate from the aerial platform. Lastly, we hosted an open house yesterday. It was quite the hit this year. We incorporated a new thing. It was called the Junior Firefighter Challenge. It consisted of six different events and stations, and when the children completed all six stations, they got a reward, obviously. But that's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Don't forget to say we serve 500 hot dogs. I will never eat another hot dog in my life.
She counted each one.
Captain Shipman and I counted them.
Anything else?
Well, I'll wait. Never mind. Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, next.
We can have Sarah Price from the Human Resources Department.
Okay, the city of Mount Clemens ended the third quarter with 71 total employees. That's with 62 full-time and nine part-time staff. We successfully onboarded four new part-time employees, two new full-time employees, and reclassified three employees. The movement of employees necessitated a couple openings to the public. We currently have positions of a maintenance worker in the water and sewer division as well as crew leader in the wastewater treatment plant. Both positions are open until Monday, October 22nd, and interested applicants can find the employment application online at www.cityofmountclemens.com and click on the link for job opportunities. In addition, the HR office processed seven bi-weekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and a miscellaneous payroll. Both the HR assistant and myself went to designated employer representative training from our third-party drug and alcohol testing administrators. In addition, the HR assistant went to reasonable suspicion training. We worked with our benefit advisors in the preparation of changing the vendor for the retiree life insurance, and also we assisted the Finance Department with the fiscal year audit and the OPEB study. The last couple months, we've worked extensively with our new financial software for the conversion of the HR and the payroll system. We successfully settled on collective bargaining agreements with the clerical, DPW, and crew leader bargaining units, and we've also responded to a variety of general inquiries such as employment verifications, wage surveys, and insurance questions from our staff and retirees. And lastly, the Clementines newsletter was created and distributed to all of Mount Clemens residents, and copies of that are here at City Hall or can be found online for our website. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
So during the last quarter, the Public Services Department had met with a few members of the Goodfellows and received a $20,000 donation for some additional equipment in Shadyside Park, which has been ordered and should be installed in the next few weeks. Thank you to the Goodfellows for their generous donation. We winterized the irrigation systems, the city buildings, and boat docks. We have held multiple meetings with MDOT and the contractors regarding the Harrington Street Rehabilitation Project, which has been postponed until spring of 2019 due to the labor dispute between the contractors and labor unions. We submitted the Title VI report to the Michigan Department of Transportation certifying compliance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964. We've completed the street striping program for this year and replaced traffic signs as needed due to damage or poor reflectivity. We've trimmed 154 city trees and removed 28 trees as requested and deemed necessary by city staff, and we will be beginning the street sweeping program for the fall season within the next couple of weeks with the schedule posted on the city's Facebook page and website. Please do not rake leaves into the street. Please place them at the curb, and compost bags for pickup by the sanitation contractor with your regular trash. We have begun preparing the winter snow removal and salting equipment. We've issued 1,216 parking citations, generating approximately $117,000 in meter revenue. We responded to 162 animal control complaints and supplied services to over 14,000 persons utilizing the Dial-Ride system.
Any questions? Okay, say it.
No, I have a couple more.
Oh, okay.
And next, I would like to, first of all, introduce Lenny Bertrand. He is our Water Filtration Plant Supervisor.
Okay, at the water treatment plant, we had the EQ Basin Discharge Pump rebuilt and installed. We started construction this week on the 59 basement roof replacement project. We installed a new early detection equipment for the here-on-to-early drinking water monitoring network. We integrated plant flow meters into the water plant's computer to improve accuracy, and we cleaned and inspected the 4 million gallon underground storage tank at the water treatment plant, as well as the 1 million gallon elevated tank on Madison.
Questions?
I just want to say thank you, Lenny, for stepping up while we don't have a utilities supervisor, and thank you for your hard work and your efforts to keep that plant going.
Anyone else?
I have more.
Sure.
I would also like to introduce wastewater treatment plant supervisor Jason Pick.
The treatment plant treated 300 million gallons of water throughout the quarter. Our second centrifuge, which thickens the sludge, has been repaired and reconditioned. We're ready to put that back online. We completed the cleaning and televising of all the city's sanitary and combined sewers. We're using, really, that's coming in handy, the water crew gets to view those tapes anytime they're doing a repair. They go right online and do that, so that's been handy. The water crew themselves have completed four water main breaks and responded to 242 customer service requests, and we've completed and sandblasted and painted all of the hydrants in the city. So if anyone sees one that doesn't look fresh, let us know.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jason also. Thank you for your memos last commission meeting that helped us with the payment of bills and invoices, and again, thank you for stepping up in the absence of a utilities director. We appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Next, I have Patrick Glennaby from Cable TV.
Good evening, everyone. Let me pull this up here. There we go. The new city website went live on Wednesday, August 29th. It features lovely high-res photography of our beautiful downtown. It features quick access link buttons that rotate throughout the bottom of the website. Plus, there are very, there are links that we can change throughout the year and throughout the week as we need for various information to bring to the residents' attention. With that, we'd like to ask our residents who have photography of Mount Clemens, if they'd like to share with us for the website. We would love to have them. Keep that fresh and updated, so please send us the lovely shots you have our downtown, and we'd love to use them on the website. The cable station partnered with the Lions Club again. We produced our 21st Soapbox Derby video on September the 8th. That was fun. I'm watching these kids when they were this big, and now they're that big again. We'll be working with the Boy Scout troops. They'll be taking over administration of the Soapbox Derby moving forward, so we're looking forward to working with them. And our new community calendar system allows us now to insert videos, so our loop is about 17, 20 minutes long, and we're able to put videos in there, so we've been using that as a promotional opportunity. So we did a promotional video for the Soapbox Derby to get people to apply and to watch, and we also ran a promotional video for the Art Party for the Art Center. Those went in high rotation about three times an hour for several weeks leading up to those events.
What else are you working on? What else are you working on?
Oh, that's already...
What else are you working on?
Well, I'm going to be getting the Spooktacular video on there very shortly, followed by a Santa Claus parade video very shortly. No, for a second. Why is she yelling?
Could you just tell people where you want them to send their Mount Clemens photos? Because we've got some great photographers in town. Amateur photographer.
City Manager's Office would be fine?
City Manager's Office.
We've also created accounts for the department heads for them to access their various departments on the website itself. We've given a base training to most everybody. I still have to go around to some other and give some more higher-level training, but for the most part, most of us can go in and update our own sections as necessary, or they can make those changes with myself or with Jennifer and get changes on the website very, very quickly. You'll notice too, it's responsive. Whatever device you're watching it on, it will resize itself. It's ADA compliant, so it's all the things that we need it to be moving forward, and I'm actually quite proud of it. I think it's very nice.
Thank you. Any other questions? Denise?
Yes.
I just wondered.
I'm not new, 23 years, but you can...
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I was going to tell you that I thought the website is a marked and vast improvement, and I really appreciate your efforts helping that come to fruition.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Well, I have a comment. The fountain is working. Has everybody seen the fountain?
It's beautiful.
Want to give kudos to Jeff Wood. He had had these plans for at least five years. We tried to work with some other groups. They had some other ideas, but Jeff has had this plan, and he stuck to it, and I think it looks wonderful, the fountain. I mean, it's a great addition, and the water running. And somebody took a picture the other night, I think William did, William Ewing, that right from the fountain, you have to see this, it's beautiful, right from the fountain, he was near it, where the water was coming down, and looking out on Macomb Street in the dusk. Beautiful picture. Beautiful picture. We need to get it and put it in here or something. But I do want to thank, Jeff's worked real hard on this, and it looks great.
And thank you to the DDA for the new canopy.
Yes, the new canopy for the DDA. So it's, we're getting there, you know? It's looking really great. I have been remiss, and I want to do this now, so if everybody would please stand for just a moment so I can have a moment of silence for Reverend Thompson from the North Broadway Church of Christ. He passed away, if I'm not mistaken, last week?
Saturday.
Saturday? Last Saturday.
Just pass Saturday morning.
Okay. No. It was a week before. But anyway, Reverend Thompson has done, had done so much for this community, and he was a part of the city. He was part of the school system. He was just part of the whole community, and he will definitely be missed, so if we could have just a few moments of silence. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other reports? Any, nothing? Adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay. Public participation, this is the time you may address this body.
Roco.
Oh, Roco. Oh, excuse me.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Speak out a turn, then I get all. Anyway. Now it's public participation time. You may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, your residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule.
Joe E. Harrington, 152 Court Street. On the matter of marijuana, whether medical or recreational, it's been here, it always has been here, it's here now, it's going to be here, it's coming, can't stop it, can't do nothing about it. It's like the numbers, the street numbers. Illegal, got the lottery now. Alcohol prohibition, it's legal now. It's either get with it or get behind it. I know that. But concerning growing manufacturing, I can tell you from firsthand experience, I had a grow house next to me one time, and another one a ways away another time. And when it's at its peak, ready to be harvest picked, it smells so strong, so bad, you can smell it a long distance away. And this, I'm talking about 24 hours a day for weeks or months. And it gets in your nostrils, and it burns, and it stays, and anything that you breathe, inhale, it goes in your lungs and getting a contact high. You remember Ford Plastic Paint Plant, the fumes? I think there was a lawsuit of cancel even with that. You remember the city dump, how it smelled? You remember our dear mineral water, how it smelled? The water sewage plant, right now, today, every year is promised that it won't stink anymore, but it does. And this marijuana growing, manufacturing, as far as where it will be located, is it a secret? It's not transparent enough that it's disclosed of where the proposed sites may, might be, how close it is to us. And so as far as I'm concerned, the tax dollars, it's big money. And as far as I'm concerned, the tax dollars are not worth it. All money is not good money. This is drug money, whatever you want to call it, but it's not good money because I don't think, me, I don't think it's good for the community and the neighborhood. Would we have it at the old Kmart place? Would we have it at the old Macomb Daily place? Would we have it at Washington School? And so my concern, my vote for it would be no, caring about Mount Clemens. I would say no, nowhere in Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have to say ditto to Mr. Herring. We've attended a meeting the other day concerning medical marijuana and things that's happening in the community at the Karnes Community Center, and one of the things was that it was going to impact the community, preferably a site. Again, you have to take under consideration that these kinds of buildings and places where they're going to grow or wherever have to be put in an industrial area. It can't be put in a neighborhood. And for people to think, sure, like he says, all money is not good money when it impacts the neighborhood in a negative way. So, you know, think about Gibraltar. Think about some of these industrial parks that are basically, these plants are empty, before you consider putting, allowing neighborhood stores and things, and most of your neighborhood stores and things are around houses and things are around most of your neighborhood stores and things in Mount Clemens. So consider that when you make your decisions on the parameters, on where these places are supposed to go or not go. Think about the people in the community, and, you know, one of the things that had came up is that it's going to impact the African-American neighborhood. Please, before you start that, think about what you're doing to the city of Mount Clemens and certain populations. Everything seemingly is east of Grashit all the time. Don't do that. Think about other places and other sites before you make that decision on where these kinds of facilities are going to go.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Julie Matuzik. I live at 84 Lodwick Street in Mount Clemens. I'm here tonight as the treasurer of Vote Yes for Students. You can't have a great city unless you have a great school. It's the bottom line. And we have struggled as a city for a while. We've struggled as a school district for a while. We're making improvements in both realms. Our schools are safer. We've reduced the debt significantly. The state is no longer talking about taking us over. We're really working on academics. We need to do better. We're trying to do better, but all progress is going to stop if people turn down the school millage renewal that they will find at the end of their ballot on November 6th. I am the treasurer for the group Vote Yes for Students. We're made up of a group of community folks who are really pushing for this. First, this is a renewal. No one will see a tax increase. Second, it only applies to non-homestead property.
Julie?
Mm-hmm.
She's told by the attorney we can't use this forum to promote any political agenda.
Can I use this forum to promote an informational meeting?
You can give information.
Nation, but just don't say how to vote.
But not be proposed for or against a ballot.
So, yeah, the information you're giving...
I personally would disagree with you in a city forum about a school millage, but this is a renewal ballot. No one will see a tax increase. It only applies to non-homestead property, so if your home is your primary resident, you're going to see no effect at all. If you're a business owner or own a second home or rental property, you two are going to see no change at all. All this does is renew the current 18 mills. This millage generates 27% of funding for the day-to-day operations of the school. 27% of the funding. There's no way for a school district to make up this money. So what happens, and why does this matter if you don't have your kids in the neighborhood school? Without this millage, the district will be taken over by the state and likely will be closed. We've seen that in other places in this state. If that happens, all of our home values get hurt. We know from other school districts, after they've been taken over by the state, that their students are divided up among the districts. But the residents of Mount Clemens are still going to continue to bear the cost of the school district debt and expenses for the buildings that remain. So we get all of the cost, but none of the benefits of having a great school district. There's a community informational meeting about this millage on Thursday, October 18th, at the Mount Clemens Public Library at 6:30 PM. If anyone wants more information, I encourage you to come, and I encourage you to look for the millage renewal at the end of your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You said 6:30?
6:30.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
White brief. Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street in Mount Clemens. To piggyback off of the wonderful event that is the Optimist Club's trunker tree, our student-run youth group has decided to do a family movie night on the site of the Jermaine Jackson Community Center at 50... the Jermaine Jackson Community Center at 58 Orchard Street. The movie that we will be showing outdoors will be the Avenger movie, The Infinity Wars. It will be on October 27th, starting at 5:00 PM. The movie will start at 5:00. Every child who comes that night will receive either a free popcorn or a free cotton candy. So it is a free family event put on by our student group. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. No administrator. Yeah. No, you do so. Question. Um, move, approval of the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the work session minutes of October 1st and the regular commission session minutes of October 1st, 2018.
Have a sec.
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Glad I got echoes. General business. 9A, request approval of the contract with the McComb County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the agreement for law enforcement services between McComb County and, and the Mount Clemens, I'm sorry, and the McComb County Sheriff's Office and the city of Mount Clemens, beginning January 1, 2019, and running through December 31, 2021, for annual amounts of $2,702,479, $2,746,217, and $2,778,133.
Do I have a...
Support.
Okay.
Attached is the contract with the McComb County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services. The Sheriff's Office is requesting that city approve a three-year contract starting January 1, 2019, and running through December 31, 2021. Attachment A provides the breakdown of costs for one sergeant, 16 deputies, overhead and ancillary services and vehicles. Overhead and ancillary expenses include other supervisor costs, liability insurance, equipment purchases, and supplies. Vehicle expenses include the purchase of new vehicles, maintenance, and gas. For information, here is a historical cost comparison. 2015, we paid $2,434,000. 2016, $2,476,000. 2017, $2,522,000. 2018, $2,564,000. And during this contract, the average will be $2,742,000. City administration has reviewed this agreement, and we feel that it addresses the city's needs. Additionally, the city attorney has reviewed this agreement and is satisfied with the final content.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
9B, request approval to support a petition for the declaratory ruling of the Michigan Department of Environmental Qualities. Need a motion? For quality.
Move to approve the submission of the concurrence with the, with petitioner's request for declaratory ruling to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
Do I have a support for that or a second?
Support.
Attached for your review is a concurrence with petitioner's request for declaratory ruling drafted by the Great Lakes Water Authority, Detroit Water and Sewage Department, and the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner and their attorneys, challenging the validity of MDEQ's unfunded lead and copper rules. The petitioners are asking for the support of communities by submitting the attached concurrence form to the DEQ. The unfunded mandated lead and copper rule imposes new obligations on water suppliers without duly considering the legal, scientific, technical support, and expenses forced on municipal water systems. Under separate cover is the letter request as well as the full petition.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, I've read this entire declaratory, declaratory ruling. Sounds good. And you know, when I'm reading it, I thought if the MDEQ actually did everything that Miller Canfield is suggesting they didn't do in this ruling, we should fire the MDEQ. But yet, we all know there's all these problems with lead pipes. We look at Flint, you look at the city of Detroit. I'm afraid to use a drinking fountain anywhere. But if, we have to do something about these problems. And I cannot believe the, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality didn't do some research, some fact-finding, some, something, to say that these lead pipes should be replaced. So while, if everything in this report is true, I would, we have a different problem, but it seems to me that there should be another side to this. That there must be some explanation or reason why they did the, the ruling as they did. And so I feel like I'm, we're only presented with one side. And I'm very worried about this lead pipe situation and about the water situation. And so I, did, did anybody do any research about what was the other side or what?
Well, ultimately, this, this came out of Flint.
Right.
It's where it came from. And as we know from that ordeal, right, it was, the water wasn't treated properly, which is what caused the issue. Right? Not necessarily the lead pipe. It was the, the treatment itself. And, and here in the city of Mount Clemens, while, yes, we do have some lead taps and that type of scenario, we do, you know, when, when there is new developments and permits pulled for services, that they are replaced to the current code.
Correct.
To, in order to follow suit with this new lead and copper rule, it would cost the city to do this by the date that is set by the MDEQ. You're talking probably $100 million.
You're talking city of Detroit or city of Mount Clemens?
City of Mount Clemens.
Yeah, it would be every single, you would have to dig up and replace every single water service from the main all the way to the house, to the meter. Every single water service in the city of Mount Clemens. And that includes, right, the majority of those water mains are in the center of the road or one side or the other. And so you're talking brand-new roads, every single street.
I think that this came out of a macro meeting of all the communities around. And the biggest thing, again, is it's an unfunded mandate. You know, they're not offering us any money to do this, and I don't know where you're going to get $100,000, you know, $100 million.
Probably more than that.
Probably that, more than that, to do everything. Now, we can replace up to where we are responsible right now to the curb, but they want you to go directly into each home.
I read that, yeah.
And there isn't a community around that can afford that.
And I agree with that.
It is a reaction to the Flint crisis, but like Jeff said, in Flint, they weren't putting in the chemicals. We don't have that problem. We are doing the right thing there. So that's why all the communities are getting together and saying, fine, you want to tell us to do this, then you come up with some money to help us.
That I would agree with.
That's what we're trying to get to them, saying it's unfunded again. You're telling us what to do, but you're not providing any money from the state, any money from the county, any money from anywhere. You're leaving it up to the communities. And the communities just, you know, don't have that kind of money.
The question is, when you read this ruling, it's not just about the money. That's the part that it kind of bothered me, is that, the question is whether or not these pipes need to be replaced. And if they do need to be replaced, and there is a problem with them, and I, you know, you've, I've heard different sides of the story, we should, it seems like we should be addressing the cost of it versus whether or not, you know, what should be done about it. And again, I mean, if, if everything in here is true, then we really have a, a problem with the DEQ. I mean, it's just, they totally then ignored all, according to this, everything about that was wrong. They didn't look at, it went beyond funding. It went, it was the law, it was, lead pipes don't cause problems. There was all kinds of things in this thing. But it's, it is, I think, one of those infrastructure questions that are, is going to have to be addressed sooner or later. And I would, and this maybe isn't the place to do it, but we have to look at what the alternatives are versus just saying...
You're correct. You're correct. But I think that we do an excellent job in testing that water.
And I'm not saying that we don't.
I'll be the first to tell you that I'm not afraid to drink the water out of my tap.
No, I'm not either, but...
You know.
There are old homes in, in the city.
There sure is, they're all over.
There are old buildings that haven't had their lead pipes replaced. And that is a scary thing to me. It is, is, is an issue. So I'm not, I guess...
Let's hope they don't come down 20 years from now and say that copper is a problem because most of our pipes are copper. But I just don't want to, I don't want the reaction to be that we have an issue in terms of our water. We don't. I mean, our water is tested, may I ask over there? At least every shift, right? If not more?
Yeah, it's tested hourly.
Hourly. The water is tested hourly. So, and they would be the first to indicate if there's an issue. So from that standpoint, but you're absolutely right. But I think what we're trying to address is the fact that stop giving us mandates without some support.
The funding.
That's right. You know, that's, I think that's what we're trying to say here.
Okay.
Commissioner?
So I guess my question is kind of almost for Mike, or I'm sorry, city attorney, Mr. Murray. What will the city of Mount Clemens gain from joining this declaratory ruling on behalf of the Great Lakes Water Authority? Will it enjoy, you know, stop the MDEQ from requesting this information? What will the city of Mount Clemens gain from joining this?
If, in fact, there is a declaratory ruling that the MDEQ exceeded its authority in terms of issuing this directive, then Mount Clemens, like every other community, it wouldn't be applicable to anyone, any community.
So if the Great Lakes Water Authority wins this declaratory ruling, whether we...
It will apply to everybody.
It will apply to everybody, whether we issue a resolution or not.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay. 9C, request approval of a resolution opposing Senate Bill 637 for the wireless communication facility and providers. Need a motion?
Move to approve the resolution opposing SB 637, Senate Bill 637, and forward the same to the governor, House, and state representatives, and the McComb County executive, encouraging each of them to support this resolution.
Support.
On March 15, 2018, the Michigan Senate passed Senate Bill 637 regulating wireless providers, facilities, and structures, and significantly decreasing local control. SB 637 creates a Small Wireless Communications Facilities Deployment Act, allowing providers to co-locate small cell wireless facilities and work on utility poles without the consent of local municipalities. The bill outlaws routine risk management practices and further contains a complicated set of rules about fees resulting in the financial burden being placed on local government.
Questions? Okay, seeing none. Roll call.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
9D, request approval to enter into an intergovernmental data sharing agreement with the McComb Interceptor Drainage District. Need a motion?
Move to approve the intergovernmental data sharing agreement between McComb Interceptor Drainage District and the city of Mount Clemens, and authorize the appropriate city officials to sign and enter into the agreement.
Support.
Attached for your review is an intergovernmental data sharing agreement between the McComb Interceptor Drainage District and the city of Mount Clemens. City administration has been working with the McComb County Public Works Office for the development of a wastewater master plan, has requested the sharing of infrastructure, geographic information system data with their office. The data will provide locations of existing utilities such as water, sanitary, storm, and combined sewer lines.
Questions? Comments?
Is this going to be regional? Are other CVTs, cities, villages, townships, joining this?
Yes.
Okay. What will the Public Works Wastewater Master Plan do for this city?
It's, it depends. I guess there's some hopes that, you know, as part of the master plan, the wastewater treatment facility could receive more flow from the county.
So is it going to solve or clarify an issue for us, joining this? Because I was...
It's just sharing data with them. We're not actually joining the district at this point. We're just sharing the data so that they can put together the master plan.
Any other questions?
Wait.
Oh, okay.
Wait, wait, one second here. Okay, there's a clause here that says, you know, that we're in possession of, sensitive plans, drawings, photographs, data, including data owned and maintained by, you know, by the city. Do we have some kind of, you know, guarantee? It mentions here unauthorized dissemination of, of the data. Do we have some kind of, is there going to be some kind of thing in writing that says, you know, that they won't share it, and there's a penalty if they, somebody does share it?
Well, paragraph 5 sets forth the data recipient's responsibilities.
So you're pretty confident that we're okay and we're protected?
Well, they've, they've agreed that they're not going to disclose it to, to parties that shouldn't receive it, in that it's confidential and that it's our property. You know, now whether or not they, they breach that agreement, I have, in the future, I have no way of knowing, but I would doubt it.
That's your side.
We're basically giving them our underground information, you know, where things are located, that type of thing. That's what they're asking for.
Sharing of data. With the county. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Approval of purchases and payments of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraft.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
City managers' report.
The following Halloween events will be held on Saturday, October 27, 2018. The farmer's market pumpkin party and pork roast will be from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM on North River Road. For more information, please contact 586-469-7600. The Halloween Spooktacular, sponsored by the Downtown Development Authority, will will take place from 12:00 noon until 3:00 PM on Macomb Place at the Fountain Stage. For more information, please call (586) 469-4168. And the Mount Clemens Optimist Club will host a trunk or treat at the Macomb County Parking Structure on Main Street from noon until 3:00 PM. For more information, please call (586) 463-4430. And the state general election will be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. The city clerk's office will be open on Saturday, November 3, from 8:30 AM until 2:00 PM for processing absentee ballot requests. For questions regarding the election or to find out where your voting precinct is located, please contact the city clerk's office at (586) 469-6818, extension 3. And please note that voting at precinct 5, located at Carins Jermaine Jackson Community Center, has been relocated to vote at City Hall. The city, on behalf of the bicentennial committee, will be holding its first tinsel tour throughout the month of December. This will be the final event of the city's year-long bicentennial celebration. Anyone interested in participating by sponsoring and decorating a Christmas tree can contact city manager's office at (586) 469-6818, extension 315, to reserve their tree. The cost to sponsor a tree is $75 and includes the cost of the tree, signage, 200 white lights, city fees, and proper disposal of the trees. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay. Commissioner comments. Commissioner, Mensah.
Okay. The fire department did a really great job at the open house yesterday. We figured that there was around 500 people who came. And like I said earlier, we served a heck of a lot of hot dogs. The kids had a blast at the Junior Firefighters Challenge. They enjoyed the trolley and some of them were thrilled and ecstatic to have their face painted. It was well attended. It was really great to see the community come out and show some love to our fire department. I just wanted to say a real brief congratulations to St. Peter's Church for 175 years in our community. They have been the site of tens of thousands of weddings, funerals, baptisms, and masses here in Mount Clemens for generations after generations of families. So, thank you for sticking it out in our community. I wanted to give a shout out to Exalta, who has signed a multi-year agreement to become the official paint partner to the Jacksonville Jaguars. They are an NFL team who is currently second in the AFL South American Football Conference. Exalta is a great partner to our city. They're a great company. They have contributed to a lot of different events in the city. So, thank you and congratulations. I'm kind of glad it wasn't the Detroit Lions. The County Animal Control is holding their annual Dog and Cat Low Cost Vaccine and Microchip Program Saturday, the 20th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Centerline Recreational Center at 25355 Lawrence Street. You can call them at (586) 757-1610. You can get dog licenses, dog and cat distemper and rabies vaccines. You can get Lyme vaccines, canine influenza vaccines. You can get cat feline leukemia vaccines. So, it's a very low-cost clinic if you have pets. It's a great opportunity to have the microchip for very, very low cost. The Michigan Transit Museum is offering Sunday train rides, the 21st and the 28th, with free cider and donuts at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00. They're departing Joy Park on Henry B. Joy Boulevard. You can look up them up on their website, michigantransitmuseum.org, or call (463) 1863. And because I feel, oh, trunk or treat. We, the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, is looking for more people, more businesses, more residents who want to sponsor a trunk and decorate them. As Assistant Manager, City Manager Jeff Wood said earlier, it is 10:27 from noon to 3:00 at this county's parking structure. If you want to sponsor a truck, you can call the number he already gave. You can call me. You can stop in and see Steve Saaf at Nicklin Saaf. We'd be really happy to gain some more trunks for that. And because I feel it's our responsibility to promote the city businesses and give them recognition where we can, here's where I've been in the last month or so. I've been to the rec bowl for sliders. I've been to Gumbo's. I've been to Bass City. I've been to Gumbo's several times. I've been to Bass City. I've been to O'Hallorans. I've been to May's. I've been to Orleans, Buffalo Wild Wings, Gus's Coney Island. I've been to the Anton Art Center, The Nest, and I stopped in at Artist's Music. It is our responsibility to promote our city businesses. So, any one of those places, if you want a story about them, I can tell you, see me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
On Thursday of this week, the Friends of Shady Side will be having their, guess you say, meeting about what to do with Shady Side. Thank you.
Where's the meeting and what time?
Oh, the meeting's at 5:30 at the Public Library, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
I had the opportunity, along with most of my fellow colleagues here on the commission and many of you in the audience, to participate in Advancing Macomb's Mount Clemens Community Summit that was held on October 6. And I want to thank Advancing Macomb and Oakland University for sponsoring the event and bringing so many people together to share ideas and who believe in a great future for our city. There was an incredible number of ideas that were presented, discussed, debated, and they were all listed out for future consideration and prioritization and what you can do and what you can't do. So, but for those of you that did not attend or didn't know about it, there is a survey out there that Advancing Macomb put out there about the city and about services. It is, I think you can go through the Advancing Macomb website or on their Facebook page. And so, go out there, fill out the survey, and so we have everyone's thoughts and make sure your views are included. You have until October 31 to complete the survey. So, I'm really excited about this. And after the survey is completed, they will have some more meetings. We will, we are going to try to figure out what projects can be taken and what we can get done. So, everyone fill the survey out and you'll be hearing about additional meetings as they come up. I think the next one is going to be held in November. And one other thing, on behalf of Turning Point, I want to remind everyone that October is Domestic Abuse Awareness Month. Help is always available at Turning Point for women in need. And the many of us that are blessed not to need their services, remember you can support those women by supporting Turning Point. You can visit their website at turningpoint.com to see the many ways you can become involved.
Thank you and have a great Halloween. Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
According to Google, bizarre and unique holidays for the month of October. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Wearing pink kind of exceptionally is that. I would like to just let you know that my sister had breast cancer. She's a survivor. And I have a good friend that, a male, that is a cancer survivor. So, this is not just a female kind of thing. So, just to let you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month and to support it in any way you can. One way to support it is to go get yourself checked. All right, it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as been mentioned, and it's also National Diabetes Month. It is also National Seafood Month. I just thought I'd throw that one in lighter. Special days to consider, October 20th, Swedish Day, the third Saturday in October. It was originally started as a way to bring happiness to orphans, shut-ins, and underprivileged, the underprivileged in our society. Today, it is an opportunity for you to recognize someone sweet and special in your life. But don't forget the original intent of this special day. October 24th, United Nations Day. This day recognizes the United Nations Organization and its dedication to world peace and betterment of humanity, regardless of what our government says. That's not written in our shot. All right, October 31st is Halloween, of course. And I don't know, I guess a lot of times you wonder why we celebrate Halloween. I dug this up. Its origin dates back to the ancient Celtic festival of Soen. About 2,000 years ago, in an area now the United Kingdom, Ireland, and northern France. The, they celebrate their New Years on November 1, or they celebrated at that time, on November 1. The Celts believed that on the night before the New Years, the division between the worlds of the living and the dead became blurred and the ghosts of the dead returned to damaged crops and caused trouble. And that's how it started. I want to just talk to you a minute about, or moment, about the millage renewal.
Can't unless you're just giving information.
I, I.
Okay, I'm just, just, you can't. Use public funds.
Public resources.
Public resources.
Anyway, the Mount Clemens schools will be on the ballot on November 6. It is to finance the school system. This is not a renewal and it's not an increase. It will not change your taxes at all. I'm just giving out information.
That's good.
So, if you don't vote, if this does not pass, then the students that will be here will go to other schools and the money will follow them. But it won't change your tax base and what you're going to pay each year. So, that is something to consider. All right, on another note, the Drug Enforcement Administration and the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families are holding their semi-annual National Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 27, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Wilson Gym located at 58 South Wilson, Mount Clemens. We encourage you to gather your unused and expired medications and bring them to us to be properly disposed of. The DEA will have a special officer to take the medications to a location and be properly disposed of. If you flush them down the toilet, or pour them down the drain, or put them in the garbage, they become a part of our ecosystem and in turn are ingested by people unknowingly. If you have unused unwanted medications, please bring them to us on Saturday, October 27, at 58 South Wilson, between the times of 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and we will see that they are properly disposed of. On a much sadder note, I have to inform the community of the passing of Dr. James E. Thompson, Minister of the North Broadway Church of Christ, past school board member, past member of the ministerial alliance, and a member of a number of other boards and community activities. His commitment to the City of Mount Clemens and its community spanned it over 50 years. He went on to his rest on Saturday, October 6. Visitation will be Friday, October 19, from noon until 5:00 PM at the North Broadway Church of Christ in Mount Clemens, Michigan, 260 North Broadway. Musical tribute will be held Friday, October 19, at 6:00 PM at the church. The funeral will be held at North Broadway Church of Christ, starting at 10:00 AM. The.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
The interment will be at the Clinton Groves Cemetery. That's 21189 Cass Avenue, Clinton Township. The repast will be held at Mount Clemens High School, 155 Cass Avenue in Mount Clemens. I think this is also posted on the internet in case some of you want to look it up. Just a quick Commissioner Wisdom. Enjoy the little things for one day. You may look back and discover that they were really the big things. And that's by Robert Brunt. I have some flyers for the take back. I will put them on the front counter up here, or you can come and get one if you would like, just as a reminder for the take back.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I would like to just mention again, I know we briefly mentioned it last week, that I think the eight sculptures that have been recently raised in Mount Clemens really add a lot of interest and something new to look at along our thoroughfares. And so, I wanted to thank all of the people that were involved in making that happen, especially to the MCEP group and Steve Saaf. I know there are four along northbound Grashit, three along southbound Grashit, and one on Main Street. So, now you can go and drive down those roads and see if you can spot them. A couple of them took me a couple loops to see where it was, so, so we'll see if you can find them. Also, thank you to Advancing Macomb, who brought many of the community members to the table, which I thought was really, it's difficult to do, I mean, to gather 150 people to give their opinion. And especially on a Saturday, people are busy. So, that was, that was great. And I hope that we get a lot of really great information and can move forward with some interesting projects. On Thursday, October 18, I'm going to be in Novi, representing Mount Clemens at the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government General Assembly. And there's still time to register for that. All of the other commissioners hopefully received information on that. And if you want to join us, it's at 11:30 AM until 7:00 PM at the Novi Sheraton, I believe. On Sunday, I was able to go to the fire department's open house as well. My son, Miles, very much enjoying the Junior Fire Department Challenge and I believe he wanted to go through it a third time and I finally put my foot down. It was a lot of fun and I believe that was a new addition to the open house and I think he would say, keep that. And we also enjoyed the hot dogs. I would also like to thank the Christian Lighthouse Church for inviting me to their Friends and Family Open House this last Sunday. From the moment that the two gentlemen opened the front doors and welcomed me in, everybody was very, very friendly and it was, it was a really nice service. So, thank you very much for that invitation. And I had two coffee talks this week, or this month, and had great attendance at both of them. Had some new faces, which is really exciting. Next month's coffee talks will be November 13, which is a Tuesday, at John's Family Grill, or sorry, John's, yeah, John's, and at 9:30 AM. And November 15, which is a Thursday, and that will be at 7:00 PM. So, hopefully you can make one of those and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I too want to thank the fire department for their open house and all those who helped. It's an event that helps build community goodwill. And lastly, I want to say I agree with the residential concerns on not having the placement of marijuana operations in or near neighborhoods in the City of Mount Clemens. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to add on to everybody's here. Tinseltown that we're doing this year, is the first time we're doing it, is for the bicentennial. So, try to get groups together, get a tree. They're going to be lined up on the riverfront. And I think that they're going to be out there all of December. So, if you can get a group together or get some sponsors and decorate it anyway, the trees any way you want, I think it's going to be a great setting to have and it's a great way to end a year-long celebration that we had for 200 years here in the City of Mount Clemens. So, try to help out with that, that'd be fun. I attended the meeting that Mrs. Stevenson attended the other night at Jermaine Jackson Center. And one thing that was brought up, which I thought was interesting, because I hear so much of, I didn't know they had anything Saturday at the fire department. Where, it's on Facebook all the time, people are saying, I didn't know this was going on. I didn't know this was going on. I'm just amazed when I hear that because we not only use the papers, the Facebook, the Clementine, so many resources we use. And people still aren't aware what's going on in town. So, one of the things that was brought up was block groups or block areas in your community, unlike neighborhood watches, but just block groups. I think it's a great idea if we can organize those throughout the city and then have at least one person. I think it's a great idea if we can organize those throughout the city and then have at least one person attend these meetings or at least watch them on YouTube so you can get the information and share it with the rest of your community. Because this town does an awful lot of things that people, I am amazed, don't know what's happening. Maybe it's because I'm too close to it, that I know what's going on, but it never ceases to amaze me when I open up Facebook and people are saying, I didn't know this was going on. I didn't know that was going on. I think we do a good job in getting the information out there. Between radio and everything else, it's out there. So with that being said, I hope it takes off. I appreciate you bringing that up, and Mr. Barnes is the one that brought it up, and I hope it kind of goes throughout the community. Secondly, we have our grand marshal for the parade, and I did announce it at the Jermaine Jackson Center. Her name is Erica Peoples. A lot of people in this community know her. She went to Mount Clemens High. She is an actress, a dancer. She's been in many movies. She's been on Law and Order. She's been on a number of TV programs. She's a singer. And she is so excited to come back to her hometown and be the grand marshal for our bicentennial parade, and we're just so excited to have her. So spread the word, and we'll get it out also, November 17. And I thought I had one more. I guess that's it. That's it for me, anyway. We need a motion to go into exec session for attorney-client privileged information. Correspondence, excuse me.
Move to go into executive session. Do I need to say why?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to take a five-minute recess. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.